Order the planning commission meeting for October 24th. Please stand for invocation led by Commissioner Doryer and pledge with reasons by Commissioner Cruz.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to ask you to be with us through this commission meeting. Guide and direct us, Lord, do we make the right decisions for our county. Be with us, Lord, as we leave and give us safe passage on our way home. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, commissioners. That brings us to establish from quorum, we have six of eight, so we have a quorum. Adoption of the agenda. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll move forward. Approval of minutes, we have the September 26 regular meeting minutes. If anybody find any changes, if not, I'd like to have a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
They have a motion, they'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, the minutes are approved. Nikki, that brings us to public comment period. Do we have any people signed up?
Yes, sir, we have three signed up. The first will be Teresa McManus, followed by Eddie Slagle.
Okay. Please come forward and take the podium there and state your full name, address, and you've got three minutes.
Wrong way. What happens when you pay attention to your phone and not pay attention to what you're supposed to be doing? So, a couple of things. I actually have some questions for you, besides the fact that I'd like you all to put your phones up, but you don't want to do that anyway. I've been doing some planning commission classes. Have you taken any? Have you guys gone online and taken any? Because I've been taking them. They're really kind of cool, but the one thing that I thought was really good, or what are the special skills that planning commissioners should have? They need to learn to listen, have knowledge and understanding of community issues and ordinances, being fair and open-minded, being prepared, ability to communicate, ability to analyze. And they should have relative experience in contracts and other ordinance matters. My question is, I really would like to know, because it's interesting to me, how many of you actually do? How many of you have had any courses in ethics, comprehensive plans, site plans, approval processes, planning law, or zoning? Have you? There's great classes. I mean, I'm taking them, just to brush up on things, so I know what's going on here. Why don't we pay for you to have classes? How do you become a planning commission, besides the fact that your board of supervisors puts you on here? What are your qualifications for them to put you on here? Because you guys don't listen to us. You don't pay attention to your people in the community. You don't seem to really care. So why are you up there? I know you can't answer, which I think is also wrong. You should all have to be, you are all up there because of us. But you won't answer any of our questions at any time. I think it's an atrocity, and I think it all should change.
Eddie Slagle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Edmiston, my name is Eddie Slagle, 2331 back Mountain Road, Dillon, Virginia, 23936. I reside in District Two, but unfortunately, I was annexed to District Two. I was in Three, and I love being in Three. So, no offense to whoever my commissioner is, but...
You're out there.
Huh? Oh. I'm just here tonight just to thank Mr. Commissioner Kapasinski for his work and dedication to this committee. He goes over and beyond, and like you said, not taking anything away from anybody else. But since he was recently put on, he has made an impact. Like I said, I wished I was still in District Three and he was my commissioner. But he's made an impact, and we need more people like Commissioner Kapasinski in our county government. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. You have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Slagle.
David Ball.
David Ball, okay, Mr. Davis coming.
Good evening, David Ball, District Three. I have one simple, simple question. When I go to the library, I can see a copy of the Board of Supervisors meeting packet and everything that's there, but I've been noticing lately, I haven't seen the planning commission packet there. So I'm kind of wondering why we don't see planning commission packets. I mean, are signs being posted on the property notifying us that meetings are coming up? I mean, these questions have been asked, and I think are relevant questions, but, you know, people ought to be able to have that meeting packet book at the library. So if they want to go back and look at past meetings, they want to do research, they want to review it and see where the board has looked at certain policies, has certain changes, you know, that they've requested. So there is a real need for having those packets available at the library, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. That's all the speakers.
That's all that's signed up.
Okay. All right, we'll close the public comment period. Our old business, I understand, we will add a delay, and we'll do that in November. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission, we did receive a letter, a formal letter of notification from Apex with the Rosney Creek Solar Case 22 SUP 319, where they are respectfully requesting to actually delay the public hearing and move it to November 28th, so that it gave them a chance to engage with the community a bit more. Mary Margaret, who is on the application and part of Rosney Creek Solar LLC, is here with us, should you have any questions.
Thank you.
Regarding that project, but you all received the letter and your packet.
Right. You need a vote on that, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before we take the vote, do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mrs. Hertz? She's sitting here and willing to take some questions.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a statement, as much as we're not going to be in a public hearing just yet. I'd like to make some comments regarding this particular SUP, if it's all right with you.
That's fine, sir.
The SUP is between Rosney Creek Energy LLC and the county, and Ms. Mary Margaret, if I say something wrong, please correct me, but it's between the county and Rosney Creek Energy LLC. Apex owns the LLC, and Ares owns Apex. I don't know if you're all aware of that, but it was sold to Ares maybe close to a year ago. Apex Energy Plants are individually incorporated, and they stand on their own. As far as agreements between them and the county, their balance sheets are their own. There are bonds cited in the current application that apply to decommissioning and landscape, and the LLC has already agreed that they would be responsible for any public road damage due to the construction of this power plant site. However, since this LLC is a standalone entity financially responsible for the project, there are issues that the commission may want to consider and could be covered by adding some conditions. If appropriate, the commission may want to consider the following, if you would allow me to say so. Surety to cover any eventual environmental mishaps from the beginning of the construction until decommissioning and removal of all components from the site. That no electrical and/or battery or panels are stored, regardless of the reason, on or near the plant at any time for any reason except during construction of the plant. That all damaged or spent components, including but not limited to batteries and panels, are disposed of immediately outside of Buckingham County in an appropriate manner and in an appropriate location. I don't know, but this condition probably should be covered by another bond to allow the county to do this in the event the LLC is somehow dissolved or otherwise disappears for any reason. And then surety to cover full reparations of the land under the plant, back to its original agrarian status, and any and all environmental remediation required as a result of having the plant built and operated at the site. The commission may want to also recommend that all holding ponds and environmental protections other than vegetation be located inside the buffers rather than using any buffer area for this sort of thing, and perhaps there should be some consideration regarding neighboring property and setbacks related to those, as well as creeks and drainages. And I'm not technically versed in the area, but I have read other county SUPs, and the provisions and notices that they're set back quite a bit more than Buckingham is allowed in some cases. Lastly, the commission may want to recommend that all of the conditions should state that the LLC is responsible in the event of dissolution would fall back onto the parent company or companies, regardless who they are. The wording is a matter of contractual language, and I'm not trying to negotiate that here. If the commission agrees, perhaps the zoning director could add these conditions to the SUP for us to pass along to the Board of Supervisors to further consider and negotiate and make their eventual determination.
I would ask that, if you could, Pete, if you can make a copy and provide that to Nikki.
It's right here.
Are these different from conditions 10, 11, 12, and the first one as well?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think maybe you should read them. If they are, if they're not different, fine, but if they are, you may want to... I'm leaving the wording to you. I just recommended those things, having read the conditions on the SUP. I saw the property, I don't have any problem with where they're locating it. It's off of it, there's no eye view. I mean, it's on property, I mean, Mr. Davis's property where this stuff is going is basically rocky. I don't know that he could use it for anything else. And I think Mr. Davis is quite a good steward of the land, so I don't have a problem with that. I just have some difficulty, because we deal with the LLC. We're not dealing with Apex, we're not dealing with Ares financially. All right, we do have the representation here, but those companies sit on their own. The balance sheet in that company's not big, it's small, it's a small company. So consequently, if there is something that falls back on the county, the only thing we have are the assets in that small LLC. So it seems to me that what we may need to do is add something that would give us surety that we could take care of things in the event that this LLC is somehow decommissioned in one way or another.
Okay, understood. I ask if you may run those by Mr. Wright, too?
Absolutely.
Ms. Hertz, have you heard those? Do you have a comment at this time on it, or you want to hold till the meeting?
Sounds like...
Okay.
Address a lot of those concerns in a more specific, like, decommissioning plan with, you know, actual steps of further remediation that you talk about, and you can specifically mention batteries and the conditions and that sort of thing. So something that I'll work with Nikki to see what we can incorporate.
Yeah, I'd like to mention, Ms. Mary Margaret, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name.
Hertz. Hertz. I tell you, they've been unbelievably cooperative.
I've gone to the presentation, I asked a lot of questions, they were extremely responsive. So I have no reason not to trust the company. It's just the size of the LLC, the small balance sheet, and ultimately, what would happen if this thing dissolved. And I just would like to make sure that the county is covered.
One comment I will make on that, too, and I know we talked about that, is that it's very common for developers to have project-level LLCs, and you did a very good job of summarizing our relationship with Ares and all of that. So it's industry, like, common practice, because it helps us have a more streamlined financing process. But either way, look into how other counties have addressed that, too. You can...
Okay.
Thank you.
For Ms. Hertz's stand, does anyone have any other questions for her at this time? Thank you, Ms. Hertz. Okay, that brings us back. They want a delay until November, so I do have a motion to approve that.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion's second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, that passes, so we will see you in November. All right, we have two new cases, all new business. Chris Hux, I'll turn it over to you to introduce it.
Yes, sir, the introduction tonight for a new case, 22 SUP 320. Landowner is Terry Husky, applicant is Chris Hux. The property states 799 Troublesome Creek Road, Deal 1, it's actually Buckingham, Virginia, 23921. Tax map 123 parcel 48, does contain about 13 acres, and it's in the Maysville Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A1 agricultural. The applicant this evening wishes to obtain a special use permit to operate a professional service office, which will actually be a medical office, as he has explained within his narrative, at this home located at 799 Troublesome Creek Road. The applicant is asking the planning commission this evening to hold a public hearing for this request. There are 10 conditions that you may consider adding to this request. You may also consider adjustments or amendments or additions to these as well. Our applicant, Mr. Hux, is with us this evening to address comments, questions, and concerns, and explain...
Mr. Russ, would you come forward to the podium, sir, and just give us a quick overview of your project application?
Good evening. My name is Chris Hux. I live in the Maysville District at 799 Troublesome Creek Road. Commissioners, Ms. Edmiston, and citizens of Buckingham, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I begin the application process of my plan to transition my current residence into a professional medical office building in which I will provide medical care to both adult and pediatric patients. In other words, a primary care office for our county and loved ones. I live in Buckingham and have been here for over 40 years. I'm committed to this county and want to give back to our community. I began in healthcare in 1994 on the Dillon Fire Department, and in 1995, I took an EMT course, and since that time, I've been taking care of people. I'm currently a registered paramedic, a registered nurse, and a licensed family nurse practitioner. I have extensive experience with adult and pediatric patients, critical care, intensive care unit experience, family practice, and emergency department experience as a nurse practitioner. My wife and I are currently building a new home, and this has allowed for me to transition our current house into my medical office. I would plan on this office being open Monday through Friday hours, likely between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., with the availability of open hours on the weekends from 8:00 to noon. The number of patients would be likely between 12 to 15 a day. This should not cause any significant traffic hazards or any other concerns. Buckingham is in need of additional primary care in our county, and I would like to become part of this solution. As this process takes several months, my goal would be for the renovation of the office to begin hopefully in January after the anticipated meeting and approval, hopefully with the Board of Supervisors. I would aim for an opening date of June 1st of 2023, if not sooner. Thank you all for your time, and I'll be now happy to receive and field any questions.
Okay. Turn it over to the commission for questions. Anybody have questions at this time? Would you need another doctor there with you, or just you?
So fortunately, with my experience, I have autonomous practice license through the Board of Health and Medicine, so no, sir.
Will the state allow you to do that, to operate without a physician?
Sure, I'm happy to, you know, to help explain more in detail, to provide the code, but I can go into further detail. The state Board of Health back, I can't recall the exact date, but otherwise, if you have a nurse practitioner that has over five years of experience, then they can apply for what's known as autonomous practice, and they are allowed to practice independent of having a physician.
Okay.
It may seem, I guess, not that common, because Buckingham does not have a large majority of nurse practitioners in our county. The requirements are listed as, basically, the nurse practitioner would agree to communicate with a physician or a team of specialists warranting any particular critical or patient that would need a specialist, but that's routine anyways. Most of the primary care offices in the state are usually ran under a nurse practitioner that does have a physician that, you know, can interact with the provider, but given the lack of primary care physicians, you know, in the state, the code allows for a provider with the appropriate amount of experience to be able to practice on their own. In essence, it's an autonomous license that is granted, but essentially, the family nurse practitioner usually makes the decisions on their own anyways.
Will you be referring to maybe hospitals and talking to hospitals? I mean, I just don't quite understand, if you're a nurse practitioner, how you can operate with being a physician. You usually have an onboard physician. At these complexes we have around the area, they do have physicians there, and I'm just not, I'm not that familiar, and I just wouldn't want to jump into something I'm not familiar with.
In regards to you...
Your operation, is what I'm saying.
So I can go back on my, I've been practicing as a paramedic since 1997, and a registered nurse since 2009, and then completed my master's in family medicine in 2017. And at that time, I actually worked as a nurse practitioner here in Dillon, subsequently before they ended up closing the practice. From November 18 to the last November of '21, I worked in the emergency department in Forehamville, where at nighttime, there's one mid-level provider, such as a nurse practitioner or physician assistant, and there's one physician for however many patients come into the emergency department. So my professional experience, I would not request or even, I guess, submit an application if I did not feel comfortable handling a large majority of patients or patient cases that comes into a primary care office. So, I mean, I'm happy to provide you with any other information that you may want, but... I mean, the other, you know, I do not have any problems if patients prefer to be treated or seen by physicians. That's completely up to the patient and what they feel comfortable with. But there are also a large majority of patients that prefer the treatment and bedside manners that are provided by a nurse practitioner. I've completed a bachelor's degree, associate science and paramedic degree, masters in nursing, a masters in business, and then a postmaster certificate in family medicine.
You understand where I'm coming from, though. How far can you take it? I mean, it's just where, you're not a doctor, and I just, you see what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman? Or what, do the rest of the commissioners understand? Well, I'm just, I'd like to see something stated from the state where you would be okay to operate under these conditions.
Yeah, that's what an autonomous practice is. I can provide you with the website to look on there. I'm not, you know, we don't, I can, I'm happy to accept people's opinion on whether, you know, they receive care from a physician or a nurse practitioner. There are literally maybe two or three drugs that I can't prescribe that a physician cannot. I'm not taking away from a physician and their acceptance and completion of med school, but as I just listed, I have participated in a significant number of years of education myself. And right now, there would be a large majority of clients and patients in our county that have received care from myself over the past several years that I think would agree that they feel comfortable being treated by a nurse practitioner. Nothing, you know, personal. If you, if anybody wants to get treated by a physician, then they are more than welcome to find a physician that is accepting patients.
He answered your question, did you, Steve? Basically, you were asking about the legality of it, and he's answering.
I mean, I wouldn't, the Virginia code allows for that to happen. I can send that link if you'd like to read it verbatim. I didn't copy that here tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think, if I might clarify, is there some sort of a document that has to come from the state that allows you to open up a practice?
So to open up a practice, there is no specific document that has to come from the state. I have a license, just like a physician has a license.
That's a question that was being asked, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, right.
If you don't need...
There aren't that many nurse practitioners coming to do this. So I can appreciate the not really having a good grasp on that. There are plenty of documents and studies, and we can get into the communication between patients that prefer to have physicians and prefer to have nurse practitioners there. Like, you can Google until you want to read at your desire between, and that's the patient preference. And that's, you know, obviously, patients that would come, want to see me, would understand that I'm a nurse practitioner, not a physician.
So what you're saying is legally, you have the wherewithal, the state's giving you the wherewithal to open an office?
I've been doing that for the last six years.
Okay. I have a question.
Go ahead, Pete.
First of all, are you living at 799 right now?
Yes.
Okay, and the house that's to the right of you, that sits back where the soybean field, is that the house you're building? Is that your house?
The newer house, as you're going towards Route 20.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, this is the house to the, if I'm looking at 799, there's a house being built on the right of that in a soybean field. Is that...
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So are you going to have your practice in that house?
The plan would be to do some remodeling and turn the house that I'm living in now into my office.
So the house you're living in now will then be an office, but it will not be a home?
That is correct.
So it's not a home-based service? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
No, he will not be living there. He will move into his new home.
His new home.
And this will be an office.
Yes, and this, and he's aware, he's had a couple of conversations with the building inspector, that he will have to meet a commercial code for the usage of the practice, just as the very first condition, all federal, state, and local regulations, ordinances and laws must be strictly adhered to.
Okay, will you be handling Schedule III drugs? Narcotics?
There will no, there would not be any narcotics. That requires a DEA license to, I'm not trying to open an emergency department.
Okay, so you may prescribe something like that, but you're not going to keep anything like that on hand?
Correct.
How about barbiturates or anything like that? So you're really not...
Maybe Tylenol or Motrin.
Okay, all right. So, and how about any other dangerous drugs? Are they going to be onsite?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
Other?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations. I understand the work of a nurse practitioner.
Thank you.
And, but I had a question. In your presentation, it mentioned a mobile medical service. Does that just home visits that you're talking about?
So in the, in preparation for allowing time, there are a lot of residents here that still, due to the pandemic and closure of, they, they don't have primary care availability. I am in the process of being able to start a home-based visit where I would be available to come to the patient's residence to treat them there. I've already, there aren't any regulations or anything like that, that, that I need to go through other than completing my supplies and so forth and being able to do that. So I, I'm going to be making that available, hopefully in the next few weeks, to be able to provide to patients sooner than later as the time period allows for me to open the office.
Okay, and you'll be doing acute and chronic healthcare? You'll be doing acute?
I would take on, accept any patients, adult, chronic, medical care. Like I have been practicing in primary care with all ages in both Buckingham and in surrounding counties for the last several years.
Okay, and you'd be doing well checks? Would you be doing like well baby checks?
So.
And sports physicals?
That's correct, yes ma'am.
That, and the parking space, you said you anticipated 12 to 15 patients a day, maybe?
It's, I mean, that, that's a rough, that's usually an average, yes ma'am.
And I was wondering, the parking space accommodating, how many people do you anticipate being there waiting to be seen?
I mean, I guess it would depend on, you know, the volume of particular days or, or how the total number would be sick. But usually, average primary care waiting room would be less than five or so, depending on the length of the day.
And I have a question under number four about the solid waste container. And I wanted to know about the medical, is there a difference for the medical waste disposal? Is there a different, or does that follow, would that follow under that local and state regu, regulations as far as that kind of disposal?
Sure, so, you know, it, there would be a biohazard, Sharps containers, that would be a separate contract that would come and, and pick up those, just like they do in the other doctors' offices. And we're, we're not going to put medical waste into the solid waste container. There, there would be a policy, should there be any blood biohazard, they are put in biohazard containers and, and would have to be picked up by the appropriate company that would handle that type of waste.
Right, and that's what I was concerned about, not so much the Sharps container. The Sharps, but also, but the biohazard, the drippy.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're, I'm not opening an emergency department, so there would not be a significant amount of what I would consider biohazard materials happening in, in primary care office.
Okay. Then I just wanted to know how it's going to be disposed of. So you would be contracted with a company to pick this up?
Yeah, I mean, in my experience, office, I mean, they provide a large box that would probably, I'd say, have to be emptied maybe two or three marks at the.
The cardboard box with the big red bag?
Correct, yes.
All right, and just so you know, you're talking to another nurse.
Okay, well.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking about that.
Yes, ma'am.
And actually, I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner, so I got you. And I know people love seeing nurse practitioners.
Well, I did not know that, thank you.
Okay, but that's why I was asking about those things, about the acute care and the routine care or just, you know, illnesses, where you're just looking at illnesses and the home visits, but I was concerned about the biohazards there. Sharps containers are easy to dispose of, but it's those other drippy things that come, happen to show up.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, I would be happy to provide whichever biohazard company would, would I, can get to handle that.
Okay, and should you, and there's the access for emergency vehicles, should some, you have a need for that? They would have easy access to your?
Yes, ma'am, I, I, I know that that would not be an issue.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, those are my questions, Mr. Chairman.
I like you, Joe.
I have one from Ms. Edmondson, if that's all right. I noticed when you go through A1, it provides for home-based services. Now, his is going to be a separate office. I didn't see anything in the S U P under A1 for medical services, but I did see one in N C 1, and I also saw one in B 1.
Professional services were actually added as a zoning text amendment in the spring of 21.
Okay.
So that's why you wouldn't see it. It should be updated now. I think our IT director was posting that to our overall Buckingham County website. There were a few zoning text amendments that, no, you're, you're correct, Mr. Kapaczynski, that you would not have seen. And to go back and, and address the home-based service business office, so what that actually is, if you have a home-based service business, let's say that I've had a lawn care business. In my home, I can actually just have a office set aside and that's it. People don't come to my office, but I'm allowed to work there. With a home-based service business, I could be an attorney or a doctor where I have just my office here, but I cannot see patients there. I have no advertisement, no outside signage or things of that nature. It's truly just an, an additional office for the space, but not to conduct the business there.
But why then wouldn't we consider B 1 or N C 1? Because they do specifically state medical services.
They do, but it comes down to whether or not there's an option to go there and if an, an individual has the ability to pay rent and a deposit and do those type of things. So yes, I do recognize that there are certain zones within the area that allow for that. Of course, if the area or the zoning district that you're in does not allow for it, that does allow you to make an application for the special use permit to see if the planning commission and the board of supervisors can see if those conditions can maintain the integrity of that zoning district and if it's the right fit. But of course, yes, there are zoning districts that allow for this. The majority of my applicants state I own this particular piece of property. I do not have the ability to operate a business and, you know, either purchase additional property or pay some form of rent in a zoning district in which I do not own property. But yes, you are correct, there are zoning districts that exist that allow for by right some of these.
Is his zoning district one of those or?
He's A1, so he's not.
He's A1.
So he requires a special use permit and to make application to see what the, the final.
All right, well, thank you, thank you.
You're so welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant from the commission here? Mr. Hux, appreciate you answering the questions. You can go ahead and take a seat and we'll make a decision as well as move us forward. How does the commission feel? Do you want to move it forward to a public hearing?
Yeah.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Hux, we'll see you in November. Don't have the date off the top of my head.
November 28th.
20th?
28th.
28th, that's right.
It's the Monday after Thanksgiving holiday.
That brings us to our second introduction case, Olympia Moore.
The next case for introduction is case 22 ZMA 321. Our landowner and applicant is Olympia Moore. She, her address on file for her application is 5563 Friendship Brown Drive Summit, North Carolina. Tax map is 42, it's parcel 208. There are approximately 13.77 acres in this parcel, and it is located on North James Madison Highway, Route 15 in New Canton in the Marshall Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A1. The applicant is requesting a rezon from agricultural A1 to business B1 for future commercial use. The applicant is asking the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request. This proposal is located within the Arvonia New Canton Village Center, which surrounds US Route 15 near its entrance into the county from Fluvana. It is comprised of several neighborhood businesses such as convenience stores, restaurants, and banks, slate mining, aggregate manufacturing, and trucking or industrial uses within or adjacent to this village center. Housing of all types and sizes comprise this area. The area is not currently served by public water and public sewer. However, the village area does contain various infrastructure assets, including railroad access and a water intake located on the James River could be piped to serve the US Route 15 corridor of the village. Several churches of various denominations dot its landscape and form a unifying core for the community. As in all of the villages, the major land use consideration is to ensure that infill development and redevelopment occurs and that future land uses are compatible with the varied land uses in the area. Because of this, each request for rezoning, special use permits, or subdivision within or in the immediate area that would have an impact effect upon, the village should be given careful consideration. Also, please note, the applicant continues to work with VDOT to schedule the traffic impact determination, which is page 10 of the application. Ms. Moore is available virtually for us this evening. I do have one thing to add, I have a message. I was not able to speak directly with VDOT Ms. Moore, but Mr. Edwards did call. He did not fill the form in. He had some more questions because, because there's nothing specific as of yet, that this is just future land use. The only thing that he would really be able to determine from a state VDOT guideline would be your site distance, but he wanted to have one more conversation with you and I regarding any other part of the plan that he was not aware of. So I did want to put that out there for you all, the commission, this evening as well. I'll turn it over to Ms. Moore to address questions and concerns.
Ms. Moore, you, would you give us just a quick overview of your application, please?
Sure, yes, my name is Olympia Moore, and again, I reside at 5563 Friendship Glen Drive in Brown Summit, North Carolina. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak with you tonight regarding rezoning this property. As you can see, or regarding the application, I do not have any current specific, you know, commercial use in mind for this property. But I do know that Buckingham County, you know, is, is growing, that does have, you know, the Dollar General, the Dollar Tree, some other businesses around that area. And I do think that grow, that changing the zoning to commercial would only help the county in, in the future as well.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioners have any questions for Ms. Moore? Chairman? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Is your property, this, there's a road near your property called Old Self Road. Is that the border of your property? It, it leads back to a farmhouse?
And what was the name of that road?
Old Self Road, it's a trail. And it's, it's a public, it's an easement, but it leads back to a farm. On the right-hand side going back there, a lot of nice pasture land. And in front toward 15 is where all the wooded area, it looks like cut over maybe 10, 12-year-old trees. That's your property, right? Do you own the pasture land?
That's correct.
Do you own the pasture land too?
Um, I, honestly, I, I don't know. I just know it is 13.77 acres. I don't know if that road is also included in that. I can find out.
I have a question for Ms. Edmondson.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm, I'm familiar with the property and it, it does not go back that far. That's, that's Lynn Jones Farm.
Okay.
That goes back.
So that pasture belongs to the farmer?
Yeah.
Okay, so hers is the wooded area?
Hers is the wooded area. It was harvested probably about 25 years ago.
Okay, I knew that.
And it's straight, it's directly across from the shed.
Yeah, from the shed station. Yeah, I saw it and, but the question for Ms. Edmondson is if we rezon this property, I mean, there, as you go along that road, you go along Old Self Road on the right-hand side, there are a lot of homes. There's a bunch of homes spotted back there. And I, I recognize there's a, it's a varied area. I mean, there are churches, there's everything in that area. But what happens if you rezon a piece of property and it butts up against a residential piece of property? What hap, is there, is there an implication there? What happens?
There are setbacks for construction. So if you're, if, at this point, the application as it's been submitted by Ms. Moore is for future development. So there's not a site plan stating that it's going to be one parcel, two parcels, or any particular type of business. It would be anything that's permitted in a B 1. But what, any of those businesses, if they were to construct a building or, you know, something for future use, the setbacks are what will keep them away from the property line from it. If you're a B 1 and you're close to an industrial or another business district or, or an A 1, the, the setbacks would keep you away from that. But do you have something a bit more specific than just a property setback?
I'm a little worried, well, I wasn't worried, but I'm curious to find out if there's a valuation change that occurs to those neighbors just because she has a, a commercial piece of property now that borders their property? Does it, does it affect them tax-wise? Does it?
Their properties, according, in the other conversations that I've had with our commissioner of the revenue, the tax base would be impacted to the area that's rezoned to commercial because this has gone from an agris, agricultural land use tax value now to a commercial land use value. So those, yes, sir, well, yes, sir, I don't control those rates. I don't know what they are directly off the top of my head, but I do work with our commissioner of the revenue so that she's aware of special use permits that are issued because of course, the usage of that property, even though it hasn't been rezoned, the usage is, is now commercial or different from just an agricultural usage as such. The values of the individuals that live nearby, they're, they're going to retain their agricultural tax value, whatever they've had, because they're not impacted by their parcel being rezoned as such. Now, are there any impacts that would say on a real estate analysis that would say what, what happened to those that could be, they would be conducted independent of planning commission and board of supervisors?
Okay, so, so what you're telling me is basically nothing changes, but let me ask you this. If in fact she, if, if it continued to be an A 1 piece of property, if she decided at some point in time she had a prospect and that prospect wanted to put an office in or, or a restaurant, there's nothing wrong with her coming to us at that point in time and asking for a rezoning then, is that true?
That is correct. At this time, the application states future commercial use. We don't require at this time, as of yet, a site plan, you know, or any other studies or copies of contracts or leases stating that, you know, she's engaged with any particular company or corporation to, to come in. Right now, it is just a request to rezon this 13 acres from A 1 to B 1. But to answer your question, it, it'd happen at a different time with a more specific plan.
So, may I ask you, what, why the, why the apparent urgency? I'd like to know what, what triggering this desire to do this immediately? Are you considering selling and you think you can get a better value or what, what's your, what is the issue?
No, honestly, I just, like I said, I just inherited this property from my parents. And, you know, I do have family, I do have relatives in Arvonia and Dillon. And, you know, everyone's always talking about, you know, the, the need for businesses, the need for, you know, different activities in Buckingham in general. I used to send my summers in Buckingham because my grandparents, you know, lived there and my mom is, was raised there. But as of, as of right now specifically, no, I, I don't have a specific use for it. But yes, just something in the general future, yes, I would like it to, to be zoned commercial. And then once it's zoned commercial, we would have a better idea, you know, maybe it would be more attractive to businesses coming to Buckingham.
The, Pete, the, to tag along what she's saying, the advantage of having it already a zoned business is she can advertise it as business. And that would help the process because you think about a potential person coming in wouldn't have to come in for the, if it was a by right for business, they wouldn't have to come before the planning commission board of supervisors because she's already had a rezon. So it's an advantage to do that and that's, and probably was on her part.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Moore? Yes, Steve?
Uh, Ms. Moore, you haven't had anybody approach you though yet about a business coming into your, over your land, right?
No, not at all, not at all. You all are my first contact except for Ms. Edmondson at, at. No, not at all, not at all. You all are my first contact except for Ms. Edmondson at rezoning to help me walk through this process. But no, no one's contacted me, no one has, you know, is interested, you know, of buying or selling. It is not my intention to sell. Like I said, the, the property has been in, in my family for years. So no, I don't plan on selling. I don't even know how to, you know, divide it up or, you know, subdivide it or anything like that. There are no immediate plans for any of that. Just to simply change the rezoning and then hopefully, you know, with marketing, businesses will be attracted to it.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Going back to what you said earlier though, if we, if we didn't change the zoning on this and we left at A1 and a business did approach her and that business, whatever business it was, at that point in time, would, it would come before the planning commission and the people, particularly those in the surrounding area, would then have an opportunity to comment, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if we changed it to a B1 and the business went in there, there wouldn't be a need for them to come to the planning commission. Would that then eliminate the ability for those people to make comment?
If it was a by right, if we, if it was changed to business and it was a by right application business, no, it would, it would not have to. It would go to Nikki. She would approve it and it would not go before the planning commission nor, nor the board of supervisors.
Any other questions of the commissioners?
As Nikki had noted, this does fit into the new growth area on 15. It's one of our growth zones. And there's business right across. Of course, of course, you got the service station by other Jeffries, so.
Alright, if we have no other questions, what is the pleasure of the commission? Are we gonna move this forward to public hearing?
Excuse me, Ms. Chairman. I, I, how, you know, how do we go about this? Because I, I really, at this point in time, I have reservations. And I don't know if I can state those to the commission here or not.
Right. Well.
I mean, I think I would feel more comfortable if, you know, they had some kind of plan and what they wanted to do with the property.
Right, I understand.
My, my concern is, I, I, first of all, it wouldn't be a problem for her to change if she had a business prospect. I mean, I mean, it's a matter of coming before the commission. What I like about the fact that she would come before the commission is there, those people who neighbor her property would have an opportunity to speak up. If, if we change it, if we change the zoning and those people still live there, you know, all of a sudden, what we do is we take the ability for them to come here and, and give us their view. I, it doesn't, for her, in as much as she's not really actively looking for a prospect, if one does come to her, there's no problem for her coming to us and asking to change the zone or to get a special use permit. On the other hand, if we do that earlier, like now, then I believe what we're doing is we're taking, we're taking an opportunity for people who may object to come here and, and object.
Well, if they have objections, they can still come here.
Oh, that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking.
They got a, if we go ahead, if we move it to public hearing, we, they have the right then to come and say, we don't want her property to be business because we don't know what she wants, what's going to come.
I guess I'm looking at it down the road. If she brought in a particular business and that, and, I mean, they may not have anything to object to right now because they don't know what kind of business she's going to bring in. If she brought in a store, it might be, they might be happy about it. But if, if she brought in a garbage disposal company, maybe she, maybe they wouldn't. You know what I'm saying? There's nothing, there's nothing there for them to object to now.
Well, yes and no. If you understand what a business district is and then look up the by rights, they can see what goes in it.
Yeah, I wish everybody would read that, but I don't know if anybody reads it.
I'm not sure they would do that. But that, that is the flip side, that they, they have the opportunity to come here. If, if this were to move, move forward to public hearing, they have the opportunity to come forward and give, state their cases whether they want it to move forward or not.
Okay.
But yes, it's a valid, it's valid, what you're saying.
Alright.
How's the other commissioners feel?
I think as long as they have the opportunity to come forth at a public hearing, I would be okay with it. But I know it's like, like Pete says, if you come in there with a garbage disposal company or something and, and I couldn't respond to it, then I'd have a problem. So, I mean, it, I mean, if we let it go to public hearing, then the people would have a, you know, they could come in and talk about it.
Right. Are you, are the public hearing then changing it to the business district or waiting until she gets an application, some, a, a possible applicant?
Pete's discussion is waiting till she actually has a applicant that wants to move on the property so you know what it is, what the business is going to be. It flips out.
Well, I am open to, you know, assisting Buckingham grow in any kind of way, you know, economically. I am open to suggestions. I'm not exactly sure, you know, what the people in that community want or, or need. But, you know, as far as economic growth, you know, I am open to suggestions.
Right, I understand.
And but, you know, and moving forward in a more positive light.
So that's the question. Do you want to move forward with the application to public hearing? Would the people have any understanding they can come and oppose it now? Or, and maybe if the business comes in, if it's by right for the business district, they will not have the option?
That, that's where you're at right at the moment. Nikki, you don't happen to have the list of some of the things that are by right in business to you? I might help the commissioners a little bit.
Let me see if I can pull that up for you.
That would give you an idea what, and Ms. Moore may want to know what's in it as well.
We went over, I believe I sent that to her when we started this.
Okay, good.
You know, it is on one of our growth corridors. And as you mentioned before, you know, marketability. If, if her sale is contingent upon rezoning or a special use permit, you know, that holds up progress. Of course, you know, holding, she's just asking, she is asking for a public hearing to invite the public to hear this request, you know, to see what maybe their comments and, and concerns, whether they're, you know, in opposition or support of her project. Permitted by right are things that I think you're all very familiar with in, in the area of 15, close to Dillon, not in the town, but as such. Antique shops, apartments as a secondary use, art craft hobby stores, auto truck sales, agricultural, industrial equipment, new and used barber and beauty shops, caterers, cemeteries, churches, convenience stores, daycare centers, drugstores, dry cleaning, laundry service, emergency service facilities, financial institutions, including but not limited to bank savings loans and credit unions, food stores, bakery, butchery, candy, funeral homes, garages, golf courses, driving ranges, greenhouses, garden shop, nursery, hardware stores, libraries, lube shop, auto repair, towing service, medical clinics, church-owned dwellings, motels, hotels, bed and breakfasts, museums, off-street parking, parks and playgrounds, professional offices, restaurants, retail stores, gift, novelty apparel, sporting goods, without shooting range jewelry, et cetera. Those are permitted by right.
Yeah, it's a pretty thorough list. But that does give you some idea of what could go in if we were to move it forward. And those would be by right. Any applicant, if she was to find, company-wise, had one of those, it would not be necessary for a public hearing, so.
There's no signage, right, Ms. Chairman? There's not a, there's no need, there's no requirement for signage on the property to tell the neighbors that there's going to be a change in the zoning?
Uh, yes, that has to be.
She'll receive a special use permit sign that she signs, just like page 12 of the application, saying that she'll post it 21 days prior. The, everyone listed that's an adjacent property owner there will receive a letter. And then as always, we will post the public hearing notice in the Farmville Herald is the publication that's used, two weeks prior.
I can, uh?
It's a possibility. I know quite a few of them that live there, being from there.
The whole row of people would live on there.
I don't know if anyone would have any concerns, especially with what the list we have. I think they'd probably be welcoming it, but I understand your concern.
Everything but a shooting range, right?
Yeah, probably so. Anyhow, so, what's the pleasure? Do you want to move it forward to public hearing? As, as Nikki's indicated, it is in one of our growth areas. There's business right across the street. On the other side of 15 is the shed.
What, what are the other motions we can make here?
Really isn't any other motions. Either decline or.
Can we make a motion to decline?
Choose to, but, okay, yeah. If you don't want to move it forward to public hearing. I guess you could table it to get more information, but I don't know that you can get a lot more information.
She's already given us everything she's got.
Well, it's pretty straightforward, application, you know, so.
I make motion to decline? Second.
Okay, we have a motion to decline. All in favor, raise your right hand. Three, I get all opposed, raise your right hand. That's three. So we have a tie, which means in a public hearing setting, it goes to the board, to the board of supervisors. We haven't had the public hearing yet, so where do we stand with that?
If not, can we take just a brief?
Okay. Yes.
Call for that and let me.
Do a little research?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we will take a brief rec, research, uh, break, excuse me, so. Ms. Moore, we're gonna have a tie here, so we have to take a few moments. If you will, hold tight, please.
Okay. Is there any way the camera can be turned on?
Oh, I don't, I. Apparently not, stop, thank God. Well, we can see you if that makes you feel any better.
Put her on mute?
Mics are still live. Everything is still live. Jamie's not here to pause anything.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that brief recess, giving me a chance to do a bit more research. So I was able to speak directly with legal counsel, Mr. Wright. Of course, with the motion that was made and the vote that was taken, and it was a tie, the motion fails. And at this point, it, it is declined. The vote is, the vote is, public hearing is declined.
Alright, so where does that leave Mrs. Moore? She can bring us back again?
Reconsider at the next meeting.
Okay, alright. Alright, so.
Back in a later time, let's say November and ask for a public hearing in December.
So she will not have to introduce it again, just come and force and ask for a.
Right, now it's, it's pending.
Same situation.
Her request for a public hearing in November has been.
Rejected, right, okay. Ms. Moore, do you understand the decision? Have you heard, you probably haven't heard.
No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear the decision. I couldn't hear. What were you saying?
Okay, we ended up with a tie and our county attorney has indicated that, that means the, at this point, your application failed to go to public hearing. We are short two commissioners. So if you want to come back in November, talk to Ms., to Nikki Edmondson. You'll be back on the docket and it will, you can bring it, bring your application forward and see if it does approve to move forward to public hearing at that time.
Okay, alright.
Okay, so just, if you, if you decide you want to, just contact Ms. Edmondson and she'll help you through the hurdles.
Okay. Did you need more information from me to, would that help going forward for the next hearing?
Right, I don't know. I mean, any more information you can get certainly would help. It's, I don't know that that would be that much more change in the attitudes or opinions. But if you have some more information before, if you decide to come forward, yes, ma'am, if that, if you would bring it, would be, could be beneficial.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey Nikki, that brings us to reports, your building permits, zoning administrators.
Yes, our building permits are included for informational purposes and I have nothing further as zoning administrator.
Okay, brings us to committ, commission matters in a concern. Any commissioners have anything to say? Bring up whatever.
Yes, sir. Did you have an answer for me regarding, as, as commissioners?
Yes, I did.
Addressing the.
Right.
Board of Supervisors either in the.
I did, I did talk to Mr. Wright County Attorney and the commissioner had spoke at the board of supervisors had violated no bylaws whatsoever. Had the authority to do it. So, and his supervisor that appointed him was, also was in support of it. So, if you feel strongly, normally January is when we do the bylaws, make changes, add or whatever. You could consider doing something if the commission feels that way at that point. Maybe something along the lines of a condition that sort of addresses code of ethics or something.
Code of ethics, right, because my, again, my objection was a use of we, not, his vote was inadequate, yes.
But that's where that stands. So there was no violation. We had, yeah, we had no bylaws to address that.
We had no bylaws to address it, okay.
Alright, any other commission matters? Alright, I move to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Alright, we are adjourned.